I just came in as the town meeting account, just so I can record this. Because we don't have it 100% finished yet, but we will by next week.
Okay. So we need a second on that.
A second, sorry, I was on.
That's great, perfect timing. All in favor?
Tenio, aye.
Real aye. We have discussed Northbridge Road tonnage limit. I believe Alana is on the call to discuss that.
I was on for the baseball thing.
Okay, oh, you're right, okay, I'm looking.
Sorry, but thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone on the call to discuss the Northbridge Road ton limit?
Yes, I am.
Okay, what's your name?
Hi, Cindy Trapani.
Okay Cindy, go right ahead.
Oh, I wasn't expecting to really speak, I thought that Kim would take on this one.
Okay.
Just, well, I just wanted to say that I just know that there are multitude of tractor trailers, 18-wheelers going up Northbridge Road, up and down Northbridge Road, shaking the foundations of the properties, my steps are crumbling, just flying up that road, and they're 18-wheelers, and they're just doing the shortcut to get the road. They don't, whether they belong on there or not, it is a residential road, and I just feel that, I just wanted to give you a little history. When I was, I lived, did live in Worcester, Mass., we, I lived on Mass. Soyet Road, and we had all the trucks coming from the Big D to get onto Route 20. And I had my state rep do a petition to, to pretty much stop that, because the rumbling, it was just, it was horrific. So that's what I'm asking for Northbridge Road in Menden.
Okay. You know, I actually live right off of Northbridge Road, and I've lived there my whole life, yeah.
Okay.
So, I know that in the past, it was actually much worse, because there was Misco Springs Bottling Company, and there were an exponential amount of tractor-trailer trucks going back and forth. And so, yeah, you know, I, I think that it's, it's really not even a cut-through in my mind, because it's an easy way, it's kind of our main access to Northbridge in some ways. So, I don't personally see how we can restrict those types of trucks from accessing that road.
Well, the suggestion would be to put a tonnage, a weight, so that those trucks would go on Route 16 to get to where they need to go, or down North Street, Menden Street, to get to where they need to go, and not a residential road that doesn't even have a sidewalk. You can't even walk on that road without, pretty much thinking you're gonna, you're walking on 290. It's, it's really bad, I, I mean, I live right on that road, and you, you, it's just, you can't even, like, my husband's working from home, and the noise, and, and just when those trucks going by, the pollution, the, it's like being on, on, on the mad hike. It's, it's, so I don't, I understand that water's used to be down here, but we're talking like, Penn coming up the road, Shaw's coming up the road, what do I got here, I did see like Walmart's coming up the road, the UPS tractor-trailers are coming up the road, not just to deliver packages. Like I said, Shaw's, ST Trac, S- S- Stove, Tractor, I saw, Western Express. You're talking like, I don't know how you can say that, that it's, it's okay for them to go down a residential road.
Well, I, I don't think that, I mean, almost all of the streets of Menden are residential roads, so they've gotta be... I, I understand what you, what you're saying, like I said, I live there, and I can hear the trucks, but to restrict, to restrict traffic like that, I think is, is just, I don't know, they're, they're gonna go, go through the town in one way or another, and it's gonna be a residential road. And that access road, Northbridge Road, is the easiest access to Northbridge. If you're going Route 16, you gotta go up to Uxbridge, and that...
Yeah, I'm sorry to inconvenience everybody, these trucks are...
Happy to hear your concerns.
Yeah.
Chief Kersey has...
You don't know what it's like to live there, you don't know. It's been a while, and, and let me tell you, it, it, it's horrific. It is, and I don't understand why they can't go on, I thought that by law, they're, they're supposed to be going, go on main routes, routes, not on a, a, a cutthroat. It's, it's, it's become hazardous to anyone who wants to walk it.
Correct.
And I didn't realize that you, that tractor-trailers can go on residential roads, and there are not all just residential roads in Menden. We have Route 16, you have Menden Street, Uxbridge.
Um, I don't know what the...
That's somebody in town, oh.
Oh, okay.
Um, Chief Kersey has his hand raised. Chief, do you have something to add to this conversation?
Excuse me, I just came into, I don't even know what you're talking about, I'm sorry.
Chief Kersey?
No, I have nothing.
No, I'm, I'm talking to Chief Kersey.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I gotta mute this somehow.
No, Dave, okay.
I just wanna say, if, if Kim could put, Kim, I know that I talked to Brian Murray about this, and I think he was giving you some input as well.
Hold on, I'm getting Chief Kersey for you.
Okay.
Volume on, my computer's not working, sorry about that.
Okay.
Um, so I, I have a couple things that I wanted to bring up. Representative Murray did call, call me and contact me. I guess I have two things, one is chief, and one is a resident. The first would be as chief. I don't know how we would restrict a public way in the town of Menden that is a main route to Northbridge. Part, part of that would be, these are taxpayers, whether they're businesses, or some are, you know, these big trucks are individual agencies that... I'm gonna, I'm gonna echo that one down. So some of these, some of these trucks going through, if you set a tonnage limit, you'd have residents actually who live in town, who work in town, who go through that road, who use that road and pay taxes in this town, so now you'd be limiting their access to a public way. I think, personally, I think there'd be an issue there, and as a police chief, I think there'd be an issue there. As a resident, we have, I, I would have an issue with it just because we approved a 90-plus house development right down the street from there. I don't know how you could set any tonnage that would prohibit those vehicles from going in. The town already approved that development, and now you'd constrict their, restrict their construction there. You know, so I have a concern there also, which I talked to Representative Murray about, because once I hung up with him, I told him, I just, as a chief and a resident, I wouldn't be in favor of any type of tonnage limit on that street, so.
Right, well, Chief, as, as, I know they're working on the road, and that's all well and good, you know, you see the trucks going back and forth, that, that, you know, is acceptable. But when it becomes a cutthroat, that's what I think I'm basically trying to say.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't know how you differentiate it. So you have machines going down there to build that 90-house development that was approved through the town amendment. Those, those are the heaviest machines going down there. So any, any limit you put to act, restrict those other trucks, now you're not gonna be able to get the machines down there that are building, building that 90-plus development that was approved by, you know, the building department and through the town and zoning. So I think there'd be an issue there.
It's funny, can you, can I, oh, sorry, I, I just wanted to say, I don't believe tonnage limits are to reduce traffic for a road. Tonnage limits are generally set when the roadway can't support the weight of the road, such as you have to cross a bridge. That's like, if you look at Bellingham Street, we have tonnage limits on Bellingham Street, because those three bridges that are on Bellingham Street cannot support over a certain weight. So it's not just to reduce traffic, it's, it's for a specific reason of weight.
Dan, I agree with you, I think that's the only reason you should use tonnage, but there is, when I talked to Representative Murray, that's kind of a backdoor to stop traffic. He, he's recommended in the past tonnage limits, and that reduces the traffic, which I think is a backdoor way of, of abusing kind of the tonnage limit.
Right, right. He, he had a bunch of suggestions, actually.
So, so part of the issue here, Cindy, is that, you know, if we put at the town line some sort of limit, then you're gonna have tractor-trailer trucks coming all the way through Northbridge and getting to Menden, and then what, you know, it would have to be with, with Northbridge, and I just really don't see Northbridge Road as a cut-thru road. I see it as a connecting road between Menden and Northbridge. So, I personally, as a board member, am not in favor of, of taking action on, on this, because I just don't feel that the road is a quiet residential street. It's always been high traffic, and has always had tractor-trailer trucks going between Northbridge.
Okay. Do you see any, any other way to, to go?
I mean, maybe in terms of enforcement, in terms of enforcement, you know, maybe the speed issue could be addressed with the police department. I'm sure Dave can talk to that, but I think that's probably the main avenue here.
Well, I, I was told that, you know, the, the police have, have a lot of, you know, issues going on with Route 16, let alone to be monitoring Northbridge Road.
We have a, we have a monthly radar post that we, that we post. It's a calendar that all the offices go and do radar assignments on, and it rotates every few days on different streets. Northbridge Road has definitely been hit over the past six months a few times. So we rotate every street in town on a monthly calendar, and the, all the offices go out and do active radar and patrol on the streets. Obviously, we can't be there 24/7. You know, you get a window of us there, you know, for three or four days, you know, a couple hours each day, but that generally slows them down for a little while, because then they're looking for us and thinking we're there, and by the time we come back, hopefully that, that starts up again. But I mean, speeding, with this town and any town in general these days, is, is just a huge issue.
You, you know, you're more than welcome to go into my driveway. I, I, I want to ask you about the curb, I mean, just the people that are walking with their dogs or with their grandchildren, or, you know, just getting exercise out there. There's no curb on that, on that, on the road. After you pass, what do you call it? Oh, I came with the name of the street, um, we'll connect to Northbridge, it's, oh my god.
Washington.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
After you pass that, there's no, there's no curb, like, there's cars, you know, someone across the big, you know, looks down at their phone or anything, and someone's walking, you, you're wiped out, you're gone.
Yeah, I, I unfortunately, unfortunately, that's about 80% of Menden. You know, that's really something that Allen, the Highway Department, has tried to do a good job on, is creating more sidewalks and curbs, and he had a grant for Main Street here, because it was so dangerous that we redid all the sidewalks and curbing over here. There are, unfortunately, Menden's an old Yankee town, and there were no curbs and sidewalks, and, you know, the Highway Department each year tries to do the best they can to, to add to it. You know, I'm not part of that, that process, but I, I know he takes input, and we tell him, you know, the streets that we think are the worst, and, you know, he takes the money he has and tries to expand on it every year.
Do you think that we should work on perhaps the speed limit?
Uh, speed limit's pretty much set by law, so it goes by the distance between houses and the distance of residential area, so the speed limits are pretty much set that way. Northbridge has a few speed limits, there's one part where it's 30, there's one part where it's 35, so the speed limits are regulated. I don't think you can go much below 30 on that street. But a lot of, a lot of us, trying to think, there's, there's three different jumps there, but we do patrol them, and we do enforce, enforce the speeds.
All right, so if, does Selectment Burke or Selectment Tenio have anything to add here?
I have nothing to add, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, well, Cindy, I, you know, I appreciate you reaching out on this issue. I know it's frustrating, and I wish there was something more we could do to, to help there, but we do have to move on from this issue, so thank you for, for coming in.
And thank you for your, on your end, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, consider meeting minutes for 9:1.
I move to approve the meeting minutes from 9:1, 20:20.
Second.
All in favor?
Burke, aye.
Tenio, aye.
Real aye. Consider contractor interim treasurer-collector, Kim?
Hi. So as you know, we have a vacancy in the treasurer-collector's office. We need some time in order to be able to effectively recruit for the right candidate for the position. So we have used our other consultant to make a recommendation for a firm that we can use to bridge this gap. Strategic Municipal Solutions is that firm. The motion I'm suggesting is up to 15 hours per week. Right now, just as a comparison, so you know, last time when we did this, it was 10 hours a week, and my expectation is that we are going to be closer to 10, but I want to have the 15, just in case there's some additional work that they need to do during this time. My estimated timeframe is about eight weeks.
Okay.
I move to authorize a town administrator to sign a contract for an interim treasurer-collector with Strategic Municipal Solutions for up to 15 hours a week.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Burke, aye.
Tenio, aye.
Real aye. Consider staffing positions. Kim, that's your guess.
Okay, so, I'm not quite savvy enough to share my screen just yet, I could try, but let me just start by talking first. I'm getting a lot of feedback, though, from someone, but... So, as you know, we, we worked and, with our neighbors, and we were able to regionalize dispatch, and that agreement is coming into place for January 1st. That regionalization has freed up, in addition to a lot of expenditure cash for full-time FTEs in the budget and their benefits. So we want to use those savings in order to prioritize other needs within the community. And I can get into a little bit why these priorities after I just go through the positions. Let me see if I can share my screen. Hold on, people. Hopefully, this is the right one. Can you see it? Can you see it?
Hmm.
Yes. Okay, so I'll just keep moving quickly. I know the board is familiar with all of this material, so I'm just sharing it for public consumption. So we actually have four positions that we're considering right now. I'll talk, I'll talk about the one that's not listed here first. We have a position that's the admin assistant at the senior center, and I just wanted to give an update on that position that we are going to be advertising for it and filling it. We had put that on pause, waiting to see the outcome of what was happening with the pandemic, and so we're prepared at this point to move forward based upon the needs that were presented by the director. So, the first position to talk about here that is a bit of a change is the finance director treasurer-collector position. I envisioned this position to be an up to 30-hour-a-week position. It was previously 35 as the treasurer-collector. The salary range for this is $62,000 to $80,000. What this position does is it will coordinate all the financial functions under one professional with expertise in municipal finance. It will work with myself and the board to help us achieve and set financial goals. It's gonna provide expertise in forecasting, capital planning, investing, all areas that we have been trying to put more effort into over the past couple of years. It's going to help us get through this crisis and planning for future overrides, which we know will be right down the road. And, you know, it will, it, it matches the state's current recommendation that towns start to consolidate financial positions under one main director. The next position that we are talking about is an executive assistant to fire police. This is a 40-hour-a-week position, the salary range is $46,000 to $60,000. You can see on the bullets here, it's going to provide greater customer service. The number-one feedback that we got for the regionalization of dispatch was the concern that we wouldn't have somebody actually at the station during the day in order to greet residents who had concerns. This position would be seated at the, the new station. However, it would, the position will report to the fire chief and provide administrative and clerical support to that department. It will help free him up from some of the administrative functions that he has to do now, so he can focus more on being the chief that we need him to be. It also will provide coverage for any of the leftover clerical or administrative work that, you know, still exists for providing a dispatch service, even though we are regionalized, there are still documents that need to be processed and organized, and they are of a highly confidential nature, like this confidential, and it would also help us with grant procurement and administration. The third position is a shared planner. This is envisioned as 13 hours a week dedicated to Menden. It's a shared position with Uxbridge and Millville. Our share with benefits would be about $35,000 to $45,000. This position has actually been budgeted the last three years. We were, have been waiting to work with CMRPC, which we would have been doing, in order to find partner communities that have the same technical needs and staffing needs, so that we are basically aligned in what our goals are in these communities. And so, right now, CMRPC is finalizing a job description. They would handle the recruitment, and we would obviously have a say in who was hired and what, where they work and how they work. The idea for this position is that it will provide that technical support that we have been wanting for the planning board. It would certainly be the expert that we need to help guide us through some tricky situations. And it would attend planning meetings, but, you know, equally as important is that it will serve as a liaison between the Board of Selectment and the planning board, so that we can really work on those communication issues that we keep getting so much feedback about. So financially, I'll just talk you through this very quickly. You can see I have the three possessions, the possessions here, benefits, and then I'll go down a little. On average, for this fiscal year, if it was a whole calendar year, the cost for these positions, and I just want to add this caveat, I budget at the middle of the range for each of these positions, not knowing what they would be hired at, what experience they would have. So, one year would be $67,000 in the middle, $20,000 for benefits. This $58,000 is an additional five hours that the assistant treasurer-collector would be performing. Executive assistant to fire is $52,500, benefits are $20,000, and then the shared planner is $37,000. So the cost for this fiscal year, this is based upon the number of months that we think that the person would actually be in the position. You can see it's about $39,000 for the finance director. Benefits would be all at 11, the, this would be about $4,800. Fire police, 30, benefits 11. And then the shared planner, it would be about $18,000. So the cost for this fiscal year, starting now, would be $117,000. And funding for that comes from these places. The board will recall that we had previously considered it as high as $68,000 in the treasurer-collector's office for a salary. We had budgeted the line flat for this fiscal year and put the remainder in reserve for negotiations. So we have, some of that funding from that 68 is in reserve for negotiations. Dispatch will have about six months' worth of savings in salaries, about 34 in benefits. There's a, there will be, after the, after the payout for the previous treasurer-collector and the cost for the interim treasurer, there'll be about $16,000 left in the salary line, and then there's the $20,000, like I said, that we had been budgeting the last couple of years for planning. So the funding available is $212,000, so we will still, we'll have a net surplus of $95,000 this fiscal year, even making these adjustments. For the next fiscal year, the savings are higher. Obviously, so this is a whole-year projected salary, $68,000, benefits $5,900. The reason that this is, the jump is not as great here is because the, the person in this position is already working the hours, so it's not as great of an increase. The full-time for the executive, benefits, these are all assumed at 2%. Shared benefits, same thing. So the cost for one whole fiscal year, starting FY '22, is about $207,000. And then you can see here, we'll have about $263,000 of savings from dispatch salaries, that includes overtime. We'll have $70,000 in savings and benefits, $12,000 from expenses from dispatch, 60, oops, sorry, $60,000 from the salary line, and $20,000 from planning. So the total funding available is $426,000, leaving us with about $220,000 still unallocated from the savings from dispatch. And finally, to, just to answer, this is kind of a general catch question. Why now, instead of waiting until July 1, next fiscal year? So the savings for dispatch is going to start in January 2021. The assistant to fire and police, the sooner we can get them on board, and I'm envisioning December 1, is gonna help do some of the transition from the old station to the new station, and it's gonna make sure that the paperwork and all of the details that we need in order to go to Medicumet are done smoothly. The treasurer-collector position is vacant right now, and the board has been planning to move forward, to reorganize the department for about a year. And so we would continue down that path and hope that we can find a candidate that can actually meet the goals that the board has been intending. And then for planning, like I said, CMRPC has been working with the town for about three years. And we previously were going to be paired up with Upton and Hope Dale, but their needs for their position were slightly different than ours, so they ended up regionalizing while sharing a position in a different way. This, the compatibility between Millville, Uxbridge, and Menden was more similar, and so they have just proposed this combination to us within the last month. And so that is that of talking. Okay. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I worked with, I worked with Kim on this a little bit, and I don't have any questions. I think she did a great job preparing this for this evening.
Yeah, I would agree, I, I was able to review this material ahead of time, and I think it's important for the community, and it's the direction that we want to go, so I'm all set here. Selectment Tenio, any questions?
I don't have any questions. I was able to review everything as well. Excellent presentation, and good job getting it all together. And I agree that this will be all good stuff for, for the town with the direction that we're heading.
Okay. So we have a few motions, Chris, do you want to begin?
Sure, so I'll, I'll move to approve the executive assistance fire police department position for 40 hours per week at a salary range of $46,000 to $60,000.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Burke, aye.
Tenio, aye.
Real aye. Okay.
And I'll move to approve the finance director treasurer-collector position for up to 30 hours per week with a projected salary range of $62,000 to $80,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Burke, aye.
Tenio, aye.
Real aye. All right. Is there a planner motion, Kim, or not yet?
Nope, there's no, there's no motion for the planner or for the administrative assistant. Those are mostly just updates to let you know, since the position is already budgeted, this is more gonna be about the board considering the, you know, agreement between the couple of towns, and so I'll be bringing that to the board at a future meeting.
Okay. Just because there's limited time, we're gonna jump to the new fire engine lease, because that will require a vote, just in case Chris has to leave, so I will accept a motion on that.
Move to approve the new fire engine lease for a total amount of $501,478 for a term of eight years.
Second.
Okay, Chief Kessler, you want to speak to that?
Sure, as you know, we discussed at the town meeting, the town meeting approved the purchase of... a fire engine. We were hoping for a federal grant. Unfortunately, even though the truck is 27 years old, it's still outside the parameters for what the, that grant program is looking for. So, we were, we didn't even get by the electronic score, and because it, that's not quite old enough. We did reach out, I reached out to a few leasing companies. We got a lease rate for the eight-year lease at 1.94% with a payment right around $67,000 to $68,000 a year. That truck is a program truck, which means it was already in production when we realized we needed to get a truck sooner than specing the truck, and it, they should be getting it, should be to the local dealer within a couple of weeks, and hopefully to us by the end of October.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Just assuming that that matches what we, we budgeted in the, in the budget.
Yes, the town meeting approved $75,000 for the first-year lease, so we are underneath that approval amount.
Thanks, Chief. Good to remember.
Excellent. Okay. All in favor?
Burke eye?
Tino, I.
Real eye. Thank you, Chief.
Look forward to taking a ride in it, Chief.
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. Discuss Taft Library feasibility study. Is Amy going to do this presentation?
Yep. Hi, I'm here.
How are you?
Great, how are you?
Doing well.
We also have Andrew and Tara on the call, in case there are questions specific to, you know, the design, the programming of space and that kind of thing.
Okay.
So, yeah, I just wanted to go over the results that we got from the architect. Do you want me to share my screen? Would that be helpful, or?
Sure.
Do you need to give me permission?
I may, one sec.
F.I.T. company will travel.
Sorry, Amy, I might have muted you at first by accident. Go ahead and just unmute.
Oh, did you guys get a chance to look at the study?
I did not.
I did browse through the options, yes.
Can you present now?
So, I should be able to share?
Yes, I believe so.
The, the share button is grayed out now?
Oh, got it. Okay. Here it comes.
Oh, you know what? It has to do with my computer, I'm sorry.
No problem.
This is a new computer, and I haven't updated all my settings.
If you want to email it to me, I can pop it up.
Sure.
Send it to L.C., at mendonma.com. Oh, wait, you know what? Sorry, send it to Kim, K Newman, at mendonma.com. I'm on my phone. I've never tried to share from my phone.
I actually have it. I can just pull it up. Okay. I'm done. Hold on, guys, I have it. I just got to share now. Desktop window? I'm done. Can you see it? Can, is, can you see? I am asking you, can you see it?
No.
Okay. Oh, maybe I got to turn the camera on. Wait. Mine is grayed out, too, Lonnie.
Lonnie, let me see if I can channel.
I got it. How about?
Yep, got it.
Okay. You just tell me when to scroll or whatever. I'm going to.
All right, that's awesome. Well, why don't you go to the Table of Contents page, and you can see basically what's included in the study. He includes a bit of background, all the meetings that we attended, the input that the architect received from us, and then talks a bit about the existing building and site conditions, and then the three options, A, B, and C. He goes into more detail about, you know, how it will look, you know, aesthetically from the outside, as well as some plans, some drawings. And then, you know, so the pretty pages, if you want to go and look at what he envisioned for, like, say for option A, you can go to page 17.
Oh.
And option A is a full addition. There it is. That's from the side. So, either page before or page after will give you another view. Okay, the page after. And that's behind. And like I said, I'm just going to give you an overview. You know, the, this has lots of interior, you know, floor plans and stuff like that that you can check out, but, just to give you a general idea. So, that's option A, the full addition, and then option B was if we just had kind of a, he calls it a port addition, so it would be a roof, basically, a bathroom, outdoor space to do programming, and it would be the same footprint as an addition. And that, the, the pretty picture for that's on page 24. So, he provides access, you know, from the parking lot up, you know, which, which is kind of nice as well, and there's some covered space. In addition to the terrace roof, there's, there's some covered space, like where the bathroom is. And then for the, just a terrace, you know, taking down the building, you know, doing all that has to be done, and just providing more like a platform for programming, that's on page 29. And that also includes a bathroom. Pictures are a little rough. We, you know, it's, it's hard to really tell. That one is actually kind of odd-looking, but... So, the gist of it is, we've got some issues, you know, as everybody knows with the site, you know, regarding the well. That was kind of a big budget buster. I mean, we'll, we'll get to the money, I suppose, might as well just get there. So, the estimates that we got, which, which are included in here, for the option A, the addition, which includes a design contingency, it includes general conditions, overhead and profit, and it includes a 4% escalation for every year. The total is $3,113,931. That ugly information starts on page 36. There you go. So, for option B, with just the porch, it's nine, I don't know if you scrolled down a little bit, well, actually, I can't see because of my controls, 1.231,527, and then with just the terrace, 961. Now, now, it, this doesn't even include soft costs, like any hazardous material remediation, architect engineering fees, OPM fees, nothing like that. So, you know, David pointed out the fact that we do have to deal with the well, and the fact that if we, let's say we do an addition, that would kick off new requirements for fire protection, and that those requirements apply to the existing building as well. So, that's why a lot of this is a lot more expensive. But, you know, one of the reasons we wanted to do this was just to see, what, what will it cost to take down the rectory, fill it in, move the water tank, you know, deal with all that stuff? So, if you do look at, if you go to option C estimate, those estimates start on page 36, if you back up just a little bit, and if you actually go to the summary, there you go, and blow it up, you'll see, like, the huge expenses are demolition site work for $237, and the foundations at almost $240. That's a huge chunk of the work. And not digging into the details now, but they're provided, you know, in here. It's easy to pick apart, you know, what, if we don't add a bathroom, if we just, just do the bare minimum, it's easy to kind of back into what they estimate, anyway, will, will cost just to deal with, with all of that.
So, I, sorry, Lonnie here. I'm, and I'd be more than happy to talk to him, but demolition of the existing rectory is $240,000?
And the associated site work, yeah. Not even including the foundations, obviously. Lonnie, just take a look at the, just take a look at the, the bones of it. I mean, these high-level estimates are usually pretty high, but when you see what's entailed in that, you'll, you'll get a better idea. I'm not saying this is reasonable. This is just what we have.
I'll, yeah, I'll definitely take, I'll, I'll review it a little deeper, but, I mean...
I know.
I know we're not building a residential house, but we're demoing a, ultimately, a residential house, and what needs to be done to put a patio in? I, I feel like those numbers are just extreme. I mean, unless I'm just missing something in, in the rendering, but the, if the, the terrace piece was more just knock it down and it's almost like an outdoor patio, correct?
Right. Well, it's more than that. And you'll see in the details, it's like, you know, the architect can't help himself. He can't just say, okay, we're going to tear it down, fill it in, and throw some grass on it. He's got to go, oh, you've got to have a nice walkway, you've got to do this, you know, and, and we just let him do that. So, that's why in the, in the detail, you can back out stuff that just is, you're just not going to do, you know?
No, no, I get it.
There's a retaining wall that, that will need to be put in, which is like $100,000, stuff like that, and just dealing with the basement itself, you know, cutting through and moving that water tank in. I think that's why the foundation stuff is expensive, but, I know, it seems crazy.
All right, understood. Oh, yeah, let, let me look at it.
And then the utilities that go along with that, rehooking everything up. What's that?
No, I, I understand. I, I'll look at it much closer, just so I understand it. I'm just looking at, you know, as, as opposed to building a whole home, you know what I mean? And I regret that, I know commercials are a bit different, and we have to look at it from that angle, and, and I'm, I'm obviously missing something, so, let me have a peek.
So, it was, you know, kind of a kick in the gut to, to see the numbers, I'm not going to lie. Not that we were, you know, we have no plans in place, obviously, but it's kind of exciting, you know, to, to work through this and, and see all the possibilities and, and see what could be, and all the uses that the town, you know, might have for it, you know, for the, for the community, and, and then when you saw the estimate, wow. So... Yeah. So, yeah, option C, that included the bathroom. When, you know, if you don't put a bathroom out there, you don't have the associated MEP work, you know? So, it really, you'll see, you can, you can cut it back quite a bit. Just want to see anything else I want to point out. I think that's it. So, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Mark, just, you know, I look at this and I go, holy cow, a million dollars to knock down a rectory. I'm kind of right there with Lonnie. I know that there's associated work that has to go along with it. The, you know, the biggest challenge that we have right now is that our well is sitting in that breezeway that connects the old rectory and, and the library, and that at some point is going to have to be fixed, without a doubt. I don't know what the timeline is, or if there's urgency to get that fixed. I have no idea. I just know it's been a lingering problem for a while. I think the taxpayers getting hit with another $900,000 is going to take the breath out of a lot of people, to be honest with you, especially on the coattails of a police station and a fire truck and other things that we need to do in the list of priorities, but... So, Amy, I guess the only question that I would have is, is that we really need to identify the priority of doing something with that well, and, or can we just, can we just kind of chug along for the next few years, foreseeable future, to try to get through everything that we've just went through, and then take a look at it again?
Yeah. I mean, there's, the, it's the tank that needs to be moved. So, doing that work really doesn't affect the well itself, you know, demoing the building, filling it in and moving the tank.
Chris.
But, I think you're looking more, oh, good, this is Dan, but I just want to make a point that you really, it's probably closer to $500,000 than $900,000, if you look at the demo and site work and the foundations. So, just to put that in there. But, go ahead, Dan.
I say, just, I can answer some of Chris's questions. So, the current, everything as it is today is okay. It's, I guess they kind of grandfathered in, it's an approved public water supply. However, any change to the site would require DEP to get involved. If we're lucky, it's just some minimal plumbing to relocate the pressure tank, but, you know, if you do a whole new addition, there could be more to it. But, right now, it's okay. It's just if something gets done in the future.
Right. And it's not like the buildings, you know, it's not presenting any danger to anybody, you know, like, it's not rotting in that sense. I mean, it looks horrible, but...
I would add that if it's just demolishing the building, DEP would love that. They would be more than happy to see that gone, so that's necessarily not an obstacle.
And that garage in the back needs to come down, too. And the backpack, that, they really don't like that there.
Yeah, I mean, again, as of today, we're okay, but if there's any future changes to the site, that's when we start to get into things.
I mean, they haven't said there's no way it could happen. They've just said that there will definitely have to be a new set of reviews and approvals. And I, you know, I, for, you know, just for kicks, I went to see what kind of grant money might be available from the MBLC for building projects, and given this particular number, the 3.1 or so million, we could potentially qualify for a couple of million dollars in grant money. But, we're behind, I think, 42 other communities who are waiting, because there was a pause in funding, and then reinstated and, you know, get in line, kind of thing. And then, you know, if you, so you're talking a few years, anyway, and then, of course, all that, the escalation, you know, you're talking 4% every year.
Right. Okay. Any further questions on this, or any further observations, Amy, that you wanted to add?
Well, we went to the trouble to have this done, so we'd like to at least share it with the community. So, we were planning to just put it on the website, just with the comment that there are no plans to go forward with this, but this is what we got.
Makes sense.
Okay. I think that's it, unless Andrew or Tara have anything to add.
No, I mean, I, I guess I would say that, you know, at some point, it would be nice to have those buildings down, um, just in terms of the, the, the look of the rectory itself. It is deteriorating, uh, particularly in the back of the rectory. Um, but the front is not looking, uh, particularly good anymore. Um, uh, but as you said, there's a lot of mitigating factors, uh, involved. Um, otherwise, I, no, I think everything's been covered.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, consider dispatch your appointment. Dave or Kim, do you want to talk about that?
We're just trying to get Dave's computer working.
Well, it's not working. Yep.
It's through Kim, though, it's just Dave in the background, not on Dave's computer.
We can hear you through Kim's computer.
User error. I don't think it counts if we use each other's computers.
It's always user error.
Sorry about that. I don't know why, tried a different browser, everything, not working. Um, so since we had dispatch, um, announced that we were going to Medicumet, since we made that announcement, we've lost two full-time dispatchers, one right away, and then the second one has left about three, four weeks ago. Um, so I'm down to full, two full-time dispatchers right now. I obviously can't run on that, so we do have an individual, um, who's gonna be going to the Full Time Academy later on, um, in the year. So he knows that this isn't gonna be a permanent job. Um, he's already been trained, he's ready to roll, um, and work midnights. So we're gonna have him start on midnights this week, um, in a full-time position, and I'm gonna replace that one for now. I think I'm gonna be able to run on three full-time dispatchers. I have a bunch of part-timers that we'll be appointing soon, and that's where I'm gonna fill the gap.
Okay. Do we need a, we have a motion there? No? No, but we can hear Kim like she's talking in the microphone, so.
Uh, she's talking over to, uh, Eric. Um, do we have a motion for the dispatcher? Okay. Do you want me to read mine? I have my, can you hand me my phone? I can give you the motion, if you want me to give it to him.
Yeah.
Where are you from?
Um, let's see. Okay. This is. Here we go. Okay. Uh, dear Chairman Reel, I respectfully request that the Select Board consider appointment of Mr. Nicholas Walker to position of Communication Officer for the Men and Police Department. Uh, Mr. Walker would begin his employment at a pay rate of twenty-five-point-oh-eight-three-two an hour. Thank you for your consideration of this appointment. So you want to just do a motion to appoint Mr. Walker to begin employment at the pay rate of twenty-five-point-oh-eight-three-two?
So moved.
Sir, second. All in favor?
For God.
Tenio, aye.
Real aye. All set. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And that would be all, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
For God.
Tenio, aye.
Real aye. That's it. One hour. Bye-bye.
Nice job. See you, guys.